I would call this meeting to the Board of School Directors to order at this time. I need to inform you that we hold an executive session at 6:30 this evening for the purpose of discussing personnel. Mrs. Laye, I'm sorry, would you all rise and join me in place?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Layjer, would you call the votes please? Yes. Mrs. Elder. Here. Mr. Howser.
Here.
Mrs. Kozar. Here. Dr. Lachlan.
Here.
Mrs. Maynes.
Here.
Dr. Moplin. Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
And Dr. Toole.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Layjer. We should explain that Dr. Lachlan is voting by telephone tonight. She's starting us for the meeting by telephone. And this is time now for hearing of visitors, part one. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board about any item that's on tonight's agenda, this is your opportunity. If you wish to address the board, please approach the podium and tell us your name and address. I see no one, we will move on. I will move for the adoption of resolution number 255, the approval of the minutes.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. We approve the minutes of the regular meeting held May 22nd and the committee of a whole meeting held June 12th. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. This pass unanimously. Solicitors report, Mr. Nichols.
No report.
Thank you. Legislative report, Dr. Lachlan.
No report.
Do you have a legislative report?
Hmm?
Do you have a legislative report?
Uh, no, I do not. No report.
Thank you.
There's something I'd like to say. On our website, there was the discussion that PSBA testified at the hearing about the tax credit. And the governor's proposal to put, I believe, seventy-five million dollars into giving money through to schools. And the PSBA is very concerned that this takes away from the public schools that are supported by, would be supported by that same pot of money. And it's a matter of great concern and not nearly as innocuous as the things you read in the paper might happen to be. So, the fellow who was at St. Vincent at the same time that we talked to the secretary of the, dinner?
Dinner.
Dinner. That whole, the dinner and the cola were at St. Vincent, were going to testify there. And they had asked for people to talk about, come and talk about how this would work and how, and Tom Gensel, so on behalf of the PSBA. Well, once again, it's something that we need to get in touch with our legislators about.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Education and planning, I will bundle resolutions number 256 and 257. 256 being to approve the 2012 extended school year services of the New Story School, Northwestern Human Services and the Presley Bridge School for Autism. And 257 being the approval of a dietetic intern for 2012-2013. So moved on 256 and 257. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We approve both resolutions, 256 and 257. Any discussion on either of those, on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, both of those are approved. I will also bundle the 258, 259, and 260, the approval of tuition students for 2012-2013, and school district affiliation agreement with California University of Pennsylvania, and the school district affiliation agreement with Duquesne University School of Education. So moved on resolutions 258, 259, and 260.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We approve those three resolutions. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Those also pass unanimously. And we're now ready for finance. Anything else under education or planning?
I was wondering if Mrs. Elder could use the financial statistics of finance to, along with your, our, our, that's what they are.
And we ask her to choose here. I'll begin with the bundling of resolutions number 261, 262, and 263, which are the treasuries report for April 2012 and the bills date of June 20th, 20th of 2012, and the budgetary transfer. I move for adoption of those three.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozar. Any discussion on those, on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Those also pass unanimously.
And I move for adoption of resolution number 264, which is the insurance renewals for 212-213. And there is a chart in your packet. It totals $244,412.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 264. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of approving a resolution number 264, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously.
And I'll put together resolution number 265 and 266, which are, one is the reenactment of Act 511 taxes, and the other is the reenactment of the per capita taxes. I move for their adoption.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolutions number 265 and 266. Any discussion on that motion? Again, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Those also pass unanimously.
I'll move for adoption of resolution number 267, which is the extension of Section 125 Tax Benefit Act for 2012-2013.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 267. Any discussion? All those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously.
And I'll move for adoption of resolution number 268, which is to accept the disbursement of the funds from the Dr. and Mrs. Williams to Viskey Fund.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 268. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously.
I will move for adoption of resolution number 269, which is the adoption of the 2012-2013 general price budget. And those of you in the audience and board members will note that in this resolution there is a blank, and that amount of the budget total should be forty-eight million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars.
I'm studying her taxes. But if, if, if Heidi could read the agenda idly because she can hear her very well, does that rate everyone?
Yeah.
Just read it if you can hear from there. Rhonda.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to read you this. The total amount of the budget, including wages and benefits, for all district employees and other planned expenditures for 2012-2013 is forty-eight million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Okay, that's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 269. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All that, I need a roll call by Mrs. Layjer. Miss, excuse me, Mrs. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Howser.
Yes.
Mrs. Kozar.
Yes.
Dr. Lachlan.
Yes.
Mr. Music.
No.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Zorch.
Yes.
Mrs. Maynes.
Yes.
That, that motion approves, um, six, one.
Seven.
Seven, one, that's right, seven. Thank you.
I move for adoption of resolution number 270, which is the 2012-2013 millage levy. And filling in the blank on the agenda, it will be a tax of seventy-six mils is hereby laid, levied, and assessed upon each dollar of assessed valuation, or seventy-six dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed valuation of all property in said school district upon which county tax is levied and assessed. And this is a raise of 1.5 mils.
Second.
Rhonda, I'll read that for you.
Okay.
A tax of seventy-six mils is hereby laid, levied, and assessed upon each dollar of assessed valuation, or seventy-six dollars per one thousand dollars of assessed valuation of all property in said school district upon which county tax is levied and assessed. And that is 1.5 mil increase.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 270. Any discussion?
It's to my contention that we should go to the maximum amount of dollars that's allowed by the state under this law that has much of a lot of worries. I feel we've had this discussion a few weeks ago, and we would accept a 1.5, but I thought we should go with 1.64. We'll, we'll support that. I feel that, that the school district, we've been very diligent, and we've adjusted the taxpayers by being very careful in how we spend their money and offering an excellent education to our community. And I feel that we've drawn about as much as we can out of it. And I think that the only way the state is going to allow us to function is to have property taxes until they fix that, and that's what we're going to use. I think we should get the most we can get. And if taxpayers don't like it, then they should shut up and they may tell us. I know they did last year, and I wish I was here to argue with them, but I wasn't. But I don't think that we're stealing from anybody. I don't think we're doing anything wrong to anybody. I think we're providing excellent education, and I'm just sorry that I asked them to.
Anyone else have any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call by, please, Mrs. Layjer?
Yes.
Mr. Howser.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kozar. Mrs. Kozar.
Dr. Lachlan.
Yes.
Mr. Music.
No.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Zorch.
Yes.
Mrs. Maynes.
Yes.
Mrs. Elder.
Yes.
That also passes seven.
And finally, I'll move for the adoption of resolution number 271, which is to authorize the implementation of the homestead, homestead exclusion for 2012-2013. And the blanks in that one should be filled in taxpayer relief act in the form of assessed value exclusion of one thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars, or eighty-nine dollars and forty-four cents in property tax, based on the 2012-2013 miller trade of seventy-six mils. And then, in the last sentence, the assessed value exclusion for approved homestead and farmstead properties with an actual assessed value of one thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars or less shall not exceed the actual assessed value of the said property.
Second. Do you want to read that, Mrs. Elder? Do you need to read that aloud? Uh, you don't think, okay. It's been moved and seconded, and we adopt resolution number 271. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I need a roll call by, 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 also, Mrs. Layjer.
Yes, Mrs. Kozar.
Yes.
Dr. Lachlan.
Yes.
Mr. Music.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Zorch.
Yes.
Mrs. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Howser.
Yes.
Mrs. Maynes.
Yes.
That passes eight, zero. Anything else for finance, Mrs. Elder?
No, thank you, definitely. I'll report.
Thank you. In property and supply, Mrs. Kozar.
It's been moved for the resolution, adoption of resolution number 272, the awarding of the WIU joint purchasing bid for D.C.
Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 272. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Anything else, Mrs. Kozar? Thank you very much. Student activities and recreation, Dr. Lachlan, I'll just take that. I will move for adoption of resolution number 273, to approve sports and mandated physical examinations for the 2012-2013 school year.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Elder. Any discussion on that motion? And all those in favor of adopting resolution number 273, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That is approved unanimously. I will also move for the adoption of resolution number 274, approved dental examiners for the 2012-2013 school year, as listed on your agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 274. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously. And we have an add-on, to approve a second assistant cross-country coach. Do you want to talk about that, Mr. Muir?
Yeah, what we've done is made that's across country, and a junior high that's over forty, I believe last year actually had fifty-two runners, and a big concern, when you go to meetings and travel, somebody gets hurt, the head coach has to attend, they have no one left, with thirty to forty kids at least, and especially running spread out the way they're on, it's kind of quite a safety issue. And of course, you know, the head coach will, will judge where he fits with it according to the points committee. We'll have to work on the points, see where it actually fits in, but we do feel that it is a definite need to have a second coach on that step.
Thank you. I will move then for adoption of resolution number 275. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 275. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously. Community relations, Dr. Zorch.
First three resolutions, 276, 277, 278, are recurrent really participation demanded by the federal state, Department of Defense, the Department of Defense, the Department of Defense, and the Free and Reduced Price program. 277 is the national school lunch program, and 278 is the national school practice program. So moved.
Moved and seconded. We adopt resolutions number 276, 277, and 278. Any discussion on any of the? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously.
Resolution 279 is to authorize increased and diversified school practice and lunch prices, increased practice prices by ten cents, lunch prices by fifteen cents, and secondary lunch by ten cents. You, so moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 279. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I think it should be said that we are required to raise our prices because of the federal mandates to participate in the aforementioned programs. And also, we have looked at the other districts in Westmoreland County, and this does not put us out of line with any of those. So, these are a good place to be as far as what we have to do and what.
Don't get.
I think these programs is here require, require us to offer more fruit and vegetables, which are much more pricier than some of the other items that were offered in the past. So these, these increases are to cover the increased prices for fruits and more fruits and vegetables in the student's laundry practice. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 279. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
Resolution 2A is approved for professional services agreement with, how I had to sell the health, position services at a price of fifty-nine dollars for the school year twenty-four, twenty-fifteen. So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 280. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that also passes unanimously. Intermediate unit, the, the meeting is as we speak right now, and of course, I can't be in two places at one time, so I am here, and I will, you will have the minutes of that meeting in your packet, and, and. E W C T C Joint Operating Committee, Mrs. Kozar.
No report. The meeting's tomorrow.
Thank you. Board Policy, P S B L A, so, Mrs. Elder.
No report.
Thank you. And Dr. Moplin's in here, there's no report for transportation, Mr. Muir's.
No, we didn't have a meeting. Next meeting will be July 25th, three o'clock, at the Senior High Conference.
Okay, thank you. Technology, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mrs. Maynes. I've asked the board to approve the first one, number 281, we have so much to do with CCL Technologies, we've done our technology services provided in the past, and from what I understand, the, the fee is a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars annually, and sixty thousand dollars a month payments, and I think we're at the same base on the overall action, so it's better increases.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 281. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. And Superintendent, talking.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 282, which is the resignation, excuse me, that are listed on your agenda.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 282. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. And those pass unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 283 and 284. 283 is the professional personnel appointments, and 284 is the support personnel recommendations that are on the top of the next table.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 280, brief professional personnel appointments. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. That also passes unanimously.
I'm not sure, I didn't word that properly, so I'm going to make a recommendation or ask the board to move on resolution number 284. I tried to root them, but obviously I didn't do a good job at that. So, we would ask to have a resolution of 284, which is the support personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 284. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 285, the classified hourly rates of pay effective for the positions listed as of July 1st, 2012.
So moved.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded, and then we adopt resolution number 285. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 286, which is the approval of the employee benefit and pay plan.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 286. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 287, which is the granting of tenure of the twenty-one teachers that are listed upon your agenda pay for level.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 287, granting of tenure. Any discussion on that motion?
Now, we've never done this tenure thing with the television, cameras. Maybe the, any few people who might watch the meeting might wonder what those looks that pass have to do. This, the tenure granting is really a function of the State Department of Education, and it has to do with three years of satisfactory service. And even if we didn't vote to approve this tenure, these teachers would receive their tenure. But the state code of education, the school code, asks that the board approve their tenure. And so, our, our vote is a pro forma one, and something that annoys some of us sometimes. But the other way to look at it is, these are our teachers, they have been evaluated by our administrators, and it's a vote of confidence, both in our teaching staff and our administrative staff, to say, yes, we agree that this is the law that is being met, and is being met correctly.
Well said. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 287, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And last is resolution number 288. I'd ask the board to move on that, and what it does is allow the superintendent and gives her permission to realign staff on an annual basis.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We adopt resolution number 288. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting resolution number 288, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
And last are the meetings for next month in August. Just to note, there is only one night meeting in July, and that is July 17th, here at the CSC, where it is only one, so please make sure you note that. And then the August meetings are noted there as well. And just since we are on camera for the first time this month, I would also note that the administrative staff does work during the summer. This month, I have had more questions and comments. I'm thinking that the offices are closed. All of our offices are open, we are on summer hours, but we are in business over the summer. So, just so everyone is aware. And back to other business, number nineteen. Any other business to come before the board this evening? And now, number twenty-one, is hearing of visitors, part two. If anyone in the audience wishes to address the board now on anything they so choose, this is your time, please come forward and give us your name and address.
Seeing none. I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor of adopting resolution 289, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. And thank you for your time.